Mr. City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. And tonight's flag salute is led by Councilmember Yusefian.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand up and face the flag. Repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for this evening's invocation delivered by Reverend Rich Garner from First United Methodist Church right here in Glendale.
Let us pray. As we gather on behalf of the people of the city, we pray to be reminded that we are called to listen with patience, speak with clarity, decide with compassion, lead with courage, and serve with diligence. In all things, may we set aside both personal desire and previous preconceptions in favor of fulfilling public need and advancing purposes that uplift and enrich all. As we struggle in these difficult times, rekindle in us a willingness to offer ourselves as instruments of reconciliation, renewal, and peace to the people of Glendale. Guide and strengthen us to live as we pray. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Kasakian, could you give us your report, please?
The agenda for the February 10th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 5th, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. And our next item?
Next item under three is presentation and appointments, and at 3A is the agenda preview for the meeting of February 17th, 2009.
All right. And let's go to Assistant City Manager Bob McCall.
Thank you, Mayor Drayman, members of council. Next week, February 17th, the Glendale Housing Authority does not have any specific action items. Redevelopment Agency, though, scheduled for 2:30, has one item. That's a public hearing regarding assigned variance for 101 South Brand Boulevard. This is actually associated with the Glendale Galleria. At 2:30, there's also scheduled a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, the Redevelopment Agency, and the Housing Authority to conduct a public hearing presented by the Director of Community Development and Housing regarding proposed affordable multifamily rental housing project to be located at 3685 San Fernando Road. On that evening, the Glendale City Council meeting, starting at 6 o'clock, there's two specific action items. One is a report from the city attorney, and this will be presenting council with options to replace recently resigned Director Jim Rez from the Metropolitan Water District. And then, secondly, a hearing from the city attorney regarding extension of the wireless antenna moratorium. That would be all for next week.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCall. I know we have a presentation?
Yes. It's a proclamation designating February 2009 as American Heart Month.
And we have Councilmember Najarian will be making that presentation. And hello and thank you.
Hello. Thank you.
I have a proclamation from Mayor Drayman, and I will read it out.
Please.
Whereas cardiovascular disease is the nation's leading cause of death, with direct and indirect costs estimated to be $475.3 billion in 2009, and whereas cardiovascular disease accounts for over 35 percent of all deaths nationwide, and whereas nearly 2,400 Americans die of cardiovascular disease each day, an average of one death every 37 seconds, and whereas an estimated 785,000 people in the United States will have a new coronary attack, an estimated 470,000 people nationwide will have a recurrent attack, and an additional 195,000 silent coronary attacks will go undiagnosed this year, and whereas the research is clear that there are tools available to increase survival rates from cardiovascular disease, and whereas the American Heart Association encourages citizens to help save lives by calling 911 if symptoms occur, become trained in CPR, and encourage comprehensive automated external defibrillator, AED, programs in their communities, and whereas the American Heart Association is celebrating February 2009 as American Heart Month and promoting education and awareness by encouraging citizens to learn the warning signs of heart attack and stroke, now, therefore, John Drayman, Mayor of the City of Glendale, proclaims February 2009 as American Heart Month and urges all citizens to recognize the critical importance of tools and skills that will increase survival rates from cardiac arrest. By incorporating these tools into aggressive programs, we can save thousands of lives each year. Signed by the mayor.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I have a brief remark for you. Good evening, Mayor Drayman and members of the Glendale City Council. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. My name is Jennifer Fignani, and I'm a board member of the American Heart Association, Los Angeles County Division. The American Heart Association wants you to know that heart disease is the number-one killer of women. Each year, heart disease and stroke claims the lives of more than half a million women, about one death every minute. Go Red for Women is the American Heart Association's nationwide movement, celebrating the energy, passion, and power we all have to band together and wipe out heart disease. Too few people realize that heart disease is the number-one killer of women and of men, but the good news is that heart disease can largely be prevented. Spreading the Go Red for Women message, "Love Your Heart," raises awareness of heart disease and empowers women to reduce their risk. As you encourage everyone in Glendale to wear red in the month of February, you'll be sharing with them the tools and information they need to protect themselves and their loved ones. On behalf of the American Heart Association, I want to again thank the City of Glendale for your continued support on this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kasakian, if you please.
Next item on the agenda is City Council and Staff Comments.
Let me start on my left, Mr. Weaver. Mr. Quintero. Mr. Najarian.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, last week, we had an individual here who talked about issues with her heater, and the Neighborhood Services had discontinued their work there and said, "Close the case." I took the opportunity to talk to the lady after the meeting and went to her apartment the following day to see for myself what the issues are. I do not understand why Neighborhood Services has closed the case because I witnessed for myself that the toilet is not seated properly. It moves back and forth. It looks like the bottom of the subfloor is probably rotten. That's why it's moving so much. That was one thing. Also, the water heater, besides being over 10 years old, when it's a six-year-old water heater, supposedly, no more than six years, but it's over 10 years. But the issue with that water heater is generally, water heaters required to have a pan underneath by code. There is no pan, and it's sitting on carpet. So, that's two no-no's. You know, you have fire there, and there's a carpet underneath it. The third item was the heater, and I wanted to see if the heater was working or not. And I will tell you that the heater is very old. It does function, but one section of the water, the heater itself, that regulates the heat so you could basically set it to get 70 degrees and then shut down automatically, or at 80 degrees, stop the heater, doesn't function properly. And part of it is because the thermocouple that is there to sense the heat at that temperature and shut the gas valve down doesn't work. The heater's also very old, and it's basically clogged with a lot of dust and hair and all kinds of stuff, so it's not something I would turn on. So, what I would ask is that the city manager talk to Neighborhood Services, ask the person to go back and visit the site again and deal with these issues. I offered to fix it myself to avoid the headache for the rest of the people, but she would not allow me to do that. I even sent the air conditioning and heating guy over to just get it done so we don't have to hear this over and over every week, but she refused to do that, and we also needed the permission from the property owner. Hence, I think we need to possibly continue the process and go through Neighborhood Services and reopen the case and have the problem solved.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Starbird, there was that request. I'd also, you might briefly mention, for those listening that think that this is a, perhaps, a building that somehow the city has, the city's not the owner of the building. This is not city-sponsored housing, so you might explain why it is the Neighborhood Services would be involved in the first place. And also, just for the record, for those listening, the comments from the speaker that Mr. Yusefian is referring to, this last time, was about this particular issue. I've met with her in my office once. I've met with her in the front of Management Services on a second occasion, and a number of our colleagues have also met with her on a variety of different topics, ranging from everything from intrusion of ants to the landlord wanting to talk to her when she's not at home, and that's the subject of a... So, I do appreciate your extra effort, but let's see if we can follow up.
We'll do that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
And of course, the snow day was canceled because of bad weather.
Yes. The event Mr. Yusefian is referring to is the Winter Wonderland at Brand Park, and for a native Californian, I had to tell you, it gave me a kind of a, it was kind of humorous, that only in Southern California... For those who don't know what the Winter Wonderland is, they fill up a portion of Brand Park with artificial snow so the children can play in the snow in Southern California, where we don't have snow. However, the fact that the Winter Wonderland was canceled due to winter weather was just kind of funny, so it could only be in Southern California. Anyway, yes, sir, Mr. Kasakian.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'd like to make an announcement. March 12th, 2009, March 12th, Thursday, is the date for the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. It's the 46th Annual Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, featuring yourself, Mayor John Drayman, as well as our Master of Ceremonies, Superintendent Dr. Michael Escalante. There'll be musical entertainment. The Rosemont Middle School String Ensemble will be performing. Aaron Shaw will get things going with a bagpipe performance. As the keynote speaker this year is Tom Driesen. He's a comedian, actor, author, motivational speaker, and philanthropist, and the topic of his presentation is entitled, "There Are No Secrets, The Secret Is You." Individual tickets are on sale for $20. There's a special seniors and clergy rate. After all, it is a prayer breakfast, and that's $18. And the venue is the Glendale Civic Auditorium.
No, Mr. Kasakian, the secret is you.
Sure, if you say so. But tickets are also available, by the way, for purchase at the Glendale Chamber of Commerce or the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce, and for more information, people can call
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me also mention, we were joking about the Winter Wonderland. It has not been canceled. It's been rescheduled. And as I understand, it's been rescheduled to anyone this upcoming, is it this?
I was under the impression it wasn't going to be rescheduled.
Well, it, no, it turned back up on our calendars.
Did it?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
Anyway, well, we will get that information for you during the meeting, ladies and gentlemen. We'll get that out. The other thing that I have neglected to mention, last Tuesday, when we had Florence Tuckman here, who was celebrating her 106th birthday, and she was accompanied by Viola Barton, who in March will turn 107, was to thank Larry Miller at Beverly Ann Flores for providing some very, very beautiful corsages for the two ladies and donating those for the occasion. We thank him for that, and we thank Beverly Ann Flores for that. I have no other comments. If there's any other comments from staff?
Only comment I have, I'm going to pay less to go to that Mayor's Prayer Breakfast than the rest of my colleagues.
Are you now a senior? Is that the idea, Mr. Weaver?
Slightly.
Slightly. Okay. All right.
$2 cheaper.
$2 less. All right. Mr. Kasakian, shall we move on?
And number five is consent items, including the minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motions are proposed.
I have no cards requesting that we pull any of these items.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion on any of these items? Mr. Najarian.
Not abstention, but I'll refrain from...
Making the motion.
...approval of the minutes.
All right. You'll abstain on the motion, on the item of the minutes. Okay. Very good.
Moving it with this.
All right. Very good. Mr. Kasakian, please.
Councilmembers Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Yusefian.
Hi.
Mayor Drayman.
Yes. Our next item, please.
Item eight under action items is, well, normally, the next item would be oral communications.
And ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we schedule oral communications for the end of the agendized items, except for those who volunteer to limit their time to three minutes for the purpose of making public announcements. And our first speaker is Anna Rundell, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, and Mr. Starbird, and everybody else who's here. I'm here tonight, my name is Anna Rundell, and I'm here tonight for the League of Women Voters to announce a candidate's forum that we are putting on for the City Council and Treasurer candidates. It's going to be held here in the council chambers on that same wonderful day, March the 12th, but ours is not in the morning. It's at 7 o'clock at night, and we don't care how old you are. We don't even ask you how old you are. You get to come for free. The forum will be broadcast live and repeated, thanks to Charter Communications, until Election Day. Everyone is invited to attend. We will accept written questions for the candidates at the event itself, or if you can't come and would like to submit questions anyway, you can do it in advance by phone to the League at 818-247-2407, or by email to lvwglendaleberbank.org. Again, that's on the March the 12th, Thursday, at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Leon Mayer.
Evening, Mayor Drayman, members of the council, Mr. Howard, Mr. Starbird. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm going to make two announcements tonight, one for the friends at the library and one for Kiwanis. As far as the friends at the library is concerned, we're going to have Ed Begley Jr. come to the library on February 26th. We're finally getting Ed. We had a misfire last November. We're having Ed Begley to talk about his book, Living Like Ed, A Guide to the Echo-Friendly Life. And he's an environmentalist, as well as a famous movie and TV actor. We're pleased to get somebody of his caliber to come to the library. We try to get people of his caliber to come to the library, as long as they've written a book, and as long as they've been in a parade, or they're famous, or whatever, or they just have a good message. So, that'll be February 26th. Admission is free. Parking is validated, and it should be a great evening for friends of Ed Begley Jr. You know, his father was an Academy Award winner. He's been involved in 48 films. He's been on TV, famous TV series, and he's on radio and everything. So, it'll be a treat for anybody who wants to see Ed Begley Jr. Now, I'm going to take off, and here's some of the updated flyers for everybody here. Now, I'm going to take off my library hat, put on my Kiwanis hat. I've been here before, but there's been members of Kiwanis here, Monica Sierra's and Jerry Benton, who are the co-chair of the Child's Car Safety Seat Program that we have and been having periodically. And this is in conjunction with local law enforcement. We provide free car seats for those who need them, and these are for children 60 pounds or less, and I think they have to be at least six months. So, 60 pounds or less, and the inspection will be, it's a free inspection, and it will be a week from this Saturday, which will be February 21st, between 10:00 and 2:00 at the Los Angeles Board of Education over at Jackson and Wilson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. All right. Let me also ask any of you that are planning to speak at oral communications to please bring your cards up to the city clerk. We're going to be taking a few things out of sequence tonight, and that may or may not affect you, so if you have speaker cards for oral communications, please bring them up. I'm not going to take them now, but just so you know. What I do want to announce is that I will be taking item 8B. That's the issue related to special setback ordinance along and adjacent to Hollister Terrace. I'm going to take that at the end of the agendized items. I'm going to take the hearing scheduled at 9A as the, I'm going to move that up. So, at this point, let us move on to our Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review, and then we'll take the hearing at 9A. Okay, Mr. Kasakian.
8A is City Treasurer, regarding City's Treasurer's Quarterly Investment Review as of December 31st, 2008. Motion to note in the file report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baruchy.
Please introduce yourself to us for the record. Yes, Mr. Mayor Drayman and City Councilman, Ron Baruchy, presenting our quarterly report. Actually, had a very, this is a good news report for the quarter. Healthy property tax dollars helped propel the city portfolio to end the second fiscal quarter at $445 million, up $5 million from the end of the first quarter. The average rate of return for the quarter slipped 22 basis points from 356 percent to 3.34 percent, and reflects the rapidly falling interest rate environment. Interest earnings were $3.5 million, down $395,000 from the previous quarter. Likewise, the average rate of return for the state fund, the local agency investment fund, also dropped 23 basis points to 2.54 percent for the fiscal quarter. That's an overview of our city portfolio, and I think it's appropriate to kind of take a couple of moments to read the blurb on the market outlook, because this was written as of January 22nd. I can't remember the inaugural day. I think it was the 19th, 20th?
20th.
The 20th, so it's still appropriate. At this fiscal halfway point, let's pause and see where we are. Now, we're going to be looking at the economy as a whole. The economy is in the doldrums. Unemployment continues to rise. The consumer continues to cut back. Retail sales are slumping. Business is slowing, and companies are scaling back or closing. The outlook in a word is dreary. The government bailout has done little to free up the financial markets and/or thaw out the credit freeze. All Federal Reserve and U.S. Treasury actions put together have not been able to jump-start the housing market. All eyes look to the new Obama administration in Washington and hope that his new team brings the right magic with them. Maybe they can. Mr. Mayor, that is my report.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Baruchy. Before I go to my colleagues, who may have some questions for you, could inquire if we have any speakers? Okay. Let me start on my right this time with Councilmember Yusefian.
No questions.
Councilmember Najarian.
I just have a couple of general questions. Mr. Baruchy, when you talk about our property tax being, property tax dollars being healthy...
Yes.
Is that in relation to the previous quarter? So, what does that mean?
They came, it came in a little higher to the number than we were expecting in the Treasurer's office. I'm not exactly sure if it surprised the people down in finance, but it was a good number.
So, that is a result of, obviously, properties being reassessed at higher values?
Well, I think I'd probably defer to Mr. Elliott on that question.
The payment we get in December is basically the estimated amount based off the lien date, so it's generally just our normal payment. I don't think there was a huge variation from what we had expected.
Does the crisis in Sacramento in any way affect these property tax dollars being distributed in the next quarter? They're distributed quarterly, right?
Yes.
So, there's no...
No, no, no.
Semi-annually?
Basically, there's two large payments a year, one in December and one in April, and then there's smaller percentages distributed through other months, including supplementals and other pieces of the property tax revenue that we received. The last payments received in August for the previous fiscal year.
What is a banker's acceptance? How would you explain that to me?
It's a trade transaction, usually import-export. Somebody is shipping something overseas, and they want a letter of credit or banker's acceptance as provided by a bank to base it before they'll turn around and release. And so, therefore, when the goods are arrived, basically, the transaction is settled. So, it's sort of like a, it steps, it replaces a letter of credit.
Okay. And is that a, I see we have several with B of A. It's about 3.3 percent yield. Is that yield commensurate with the risk that's involved in that transaction?
Yeah, those are very, very safe, because you have two types of collateral on that. You've got the, you've got the security of, you actually have a security interest in the goods being shipped, number one. So, therefore, if delivery doesn't happen, supposedly, you take ownership. Remember, these are very small pieces compared to the total transaction, so we have purchased a piece of a banker's acceptance, similar to commercial paper. Commercial paper offerings could be issued in 50 or $100 million blocks, and we'll usually acquire or purchase 5 million. And then, the other security is basically banking on the, on the name of the bank that is pushing out the paper, in this case, Bank of America.
Thank you.
Yeah. We like bankers' acceptances.
I thought that a banker's acceptance was the handshake when they give you the toaster when you open the account. No? Okay. All right. Mr. Quintero.
Mr. Baruchy, are you going to, you envision sort of keeping the same balance in terms of the percentage with the federal agencies and some of the corporate paper?
Good question. Right now, no. And the reason for that is we have a lot of our Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, I think you're talking particularly those agencies, that are being called. Most of our paper is being called. In the month of, let me just mention, let me take a look here. In the month of December, for example, just in the month of December, over $70 million worth of bonds were called. They're being called because anything that we had purchased a while ago, we don't even have to go back that far. You can just have to go back nine or 12 months, was paying a return of 3, 3.5, or almost 4 percent on just about whatever the term was. Today, with rates that have basically fallen through the floor, you can take a look at our yield curve on the graph, and you can see that two-year money, two-year Treasuries are at 3/4 of 1 percent, at 76 basis points. Today, I purchased something. I had to go out three years to get a 2.5 percent rate, and I had to do that because I'm finding it difficult to park money. So, when we had 70, 70-odd million come in in December, we had 60-some million roll off in January. We're just having an avalanche of dollars that are coming back, and there's really nothing out there that I can, that I can turn around and place it. So, we're parking money. You can see that our money market funds are up to $77 million. What I'd like to do is basically open up another life account and put aside for the time being until some normalcy returns to the marketplace. the time being until some normalcy returns to the marketplace, uh, and, and, and take advantage of the life rate. To get back to your, to answer your specific question, we will look at repositioning the portfolio when things return a bit to normal. Right now, these are not normal times.
And the next, well, question, observation, I know that some municipalities here in California and actually across the country did invest with Lehman Brothers, with other, uh, you didn't, so consequently, the city of Glendale didn't suffer any losses in those big upheavals.
That's correct. We didn't suffer any losses with Lehman Brothers. We suffered no losses with, uh, Washington Mutual. We suffered no losses with Bear Stearns. We suffered no losses with, um, IndyMac. Those were just not, well...
Nice work, Mr. Baruchy.
Well, it's nice, it's nice to be appreciated for not losing money.
Yeah, well, that's ultimately what a treasurer does, make sure that, that you don't lose money.
And in these particular difficult times, that is a bit of a chore. It's, uh, um, there, there's, there's no, no way to, to really say, there's a, a real big comfort level here. You, you basically, we have laid the foundation. We did not buy. Our portfolio is, is strong, it's solid, yet it takes some vigilance.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Quintero. Mr. Weaver.
I don't have many questions. I'm just glad we've had you around the last 10 years.
Thank you.
Because you're not losing money for us. Even though my wife works for IndyMac Bank, I will hold against you that you didn't invest in IndyMac. But I was wondering, looking at the portfolio, have you ever totaled up how many, uh, items you have in the portfolio?
Yes, um, that count is, we've got about 76 pieces, I believe, right now, which is the fewest we've had, I think, in my 10 years. As of December, we ended up with 76 securities. For those that are looking at, have, have the papers in front of you, it's on page eight. Normally, we run about, um, anyways, from 95 to 100 securities in the portfolio.
How many do you move on, say, a weekly basis?
Do, do we move on?
Yeah, because you have, you're holding monies that go out years.
Uh-huh.
How much movement do you usually handle on a weekly basis?
Uh, it, it actually depends more on the marketplace. It depends on rates. It depends on, um, spreads. Um, and, for example, right now, all we're doing is parking a lot of money. Now, when we park money in commercial paper or money market funds, we're moving a lot of money. I told you about the 73 million. Well, we actually put that 73 million someplace, so every, every day, as a, as a call would come in, as funds would come in, we would turn around and find a place for it, so those are transactions. They're very short transactions, usually for no more than a week, sometimes two weeks.
Well, that's your liquid capital that you're moving so you can reach it.
Well, since we're not buying anything long, since the rates, in a word, stink out there, we're basically just, just, just parking and just, just turning it over. So, right now, we are very liquid. This is, our portfolio, for example, within one year, I think, uh, we've got something like 44 percent of our portfolio matures in, in less than a year. The total life of our portfolio is down to 15 months.
Then you have to guess what it's going to be like in two, three years out.
Well, you know, that's the easy part. The hard part is always making sure that you have liquidity. You've got to have money, because this is a, a lot of people don't realize, this isn't a portfolio like a pension fund or a retirement fund where it's locked in, and you're always taking money in, and you've got planned expenses. Here, the purpose of the portfolio is, is an active portfolio where we are providing cash flow to the budget. And unfortunately, it, uh, our, our estimates, I think, were a little, are going to be a little off this year. No one certainly predicted what the markets would be doing, and certainly, the, as we said, um, things right now aren't too rosy.
Well, sure, it's been good having you here, especially at these times.
Ah, I appreciate those kind words. Thank you, sir.
All right. Let me go to my colleague, Councilmember, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Usapien.
Uh, Mr. Baruchy, earlier on, your comment said that you would like to have permission to open up another life account.
Yes.
Is that because currently, most of our, the $80 million we have is in that poli, according to our policy, you're maxed out on the life? Would that require, uh, modification of our policy?
No, it's just a question of opening up another account.
So, you don't need anything special from us?
No.
So, you could do that?
What we need is an authorized, um, agency of the city to open one up, and I think we're, we're working through the Finance Department, and I think we've settled on, um, opening one up under the name of the Glendale Finance Authority.
Okay.
And, uh, as soon as we get the...
But you will, you will have control over that money?
Yes.
Really?
Yes, yes. We looked at other options, and this one looks like the, right now, the best option for us.
And why is it that you cannot add any more to the current account?
Because life only permits 40 million per account.
Right.
So, so we're maxed out in, in that way, not because of city policy.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
No, actually, Ron, Ron gave the answer.
All right. Uh, Mr. Quintero.
Just one more, uh, question, comment. And so, the, uh, total at this point, the market value is approximately 446 million, and the book value approximately 444 million.
Yes.
So, that's pretty much what you're, uh, investing for the city of Glendale.
The, the, yes, all, all of that, yes. The full 444 million, sure. Yes, this is, this is what I work with. Uh-huh.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baruchy.
Thank you.
Now, back to the salt mine.
And he goes home to his own checkbook.
Okay. Thank you so much.
A little smaller.
Mr. Kosakian, let's move now to item...
There's a motion to...
Oh, there is a motion. I beg your pardon.
Who's the item, Mr. Mayor?
And let's reread the, the motion, please.
It's a motion to know and file the city treasurer's quarterly investment review as of December 31st, 2008.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmembers Najarin?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Usapien?
Aye.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. And now, if we could, let's go to the, the hearing at nine A.
And nine A is a hearing, Director of Planning, regarding proposed ordinance amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, 1995, relating to revisions to the landscape requirement, PZON 2008 dash 010. This is an ordinance for introduction.
All right. Let me ask the public if you have cards you would like to turn in for this item. Please bring them forward. Thank you. Mr. Higani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Kristin Asp, the, uh, senior planner, who's prepared the proposed ordinance to go over staff report. I believe she just handed out some inserts in the proposed ordinance to, and she'll explain what that is.
Correct. So, I'll explain that when we get to sort of the end of the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Asp.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the Planning Department, in conjunction with the Glendale Water and Power Department and Neighborhood Services, worked together to develop this ordinance that examines, um, alternatives for landscaping standards to address the need for water conservation. Additionally, we, we went to the outside and created and worked with a landscape advisory group that was made up of, uh, professional landscape architects and designers to also develop and review these amendments. The proposed amendments do not make significant changes to the current landscaping rules. This is really just a first step to a more comprehensive revision that, uh, Water and Power and the Planning Department will prepare during this next year to be consistent with the soon-to-be, uh, state water conservation ordinance that's ready, I think, by March, oh, by March of this year is, is the expected date of that. Again, these amendments are not significant, but they are intended to provide more direction now to property owners so that they know what's expected of the required landscaping, and to give them flexibility when trying to balance their plant choices and their water use. The main change is to the street setback areas and single-family zones. It amends the language from fully landscaped to a combination of plant materials and permeable surfaces, and establishes a 50 percent threshold, that at least 50 percent of that area must be comprised of live plant materials. We feel that this language will support drought tolerant and zero-scape landscaping designs. It, the ordinance also introduces the use of non-plant ground covers, like wood chips, to be used in combination with plant materials. Again, this is not a big change. Permeable surfaces and non-plant ground covers have always been permitted. This language is just intended to clarify the existing requirements and encourage other alternatives to required landscaping besides just lawn or turf, while encouraging water conservation. The ordinance also adds a cross-reference to the water conservation ordinance that's in Title 13 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and it, it adds some language that clarifies, uh, that the zoning code is not violated if and when the city council adopts water conservation measures. Final part of the ordinance relates to artificial turf. Uh, this ordinance makes some recommendations to, to regulate artificial turf. The landscape advisory group, uh, discussed the overall topic of the use of artificial turf, and they expressed their concerns, uh, in sort of four major areas. Uh, first was the potential poor appearance of the product, its longevity, does it fade? Uh, there's very various quality levels of the product out there on the market. They were concerned with the potential leaching of lead, as well as, uh, any kind of bacteria that may be harbored in, uh, artificial turf. Its use on slopes, there's a concern, uh, of drainage, and there's a filling in artificial turf that's sort of like a sand crumb rubber filling that, uh, fluffs up the blades of grass, and on a slope condition and with the water drainage, that that, uh, material is a loose material and, and could, uh, gather and collect at the bottom of a, at the bottom of a slope and, and just contribute to the overall poor appearance of the product. And finally, their, uh, their concern was also related to areas that absorb and retain, you're creating an area that just absorbs and retains heat. So, their final conclusion was that if artificial turf were to be permitted, they thought that it was only appropriate in a, in a rear yard situation, something that would not be visible from the public street or public right-of-way. Uh, when the Planning Commission heard this item, they took the landscape advisory group's concerns, uh, into consideration and made a recommendation to prohibit artificial turf when visible from the public right-of-way, immediately adjacent to the property, prohibit artificial turf beneath tree canopies, and finally, to prohibit artificial turf in the ROS and R1R zoning districts to address the concerns for slope conditions, because those two, single-family zoning districts tend to be in the hillside areas. Um, so, with the new pages, um, staff recommends, uh, not only the proposed amendments, as well as the Planning Commission's recommendation for artificial turf, but also expanding limits on artificial turf to all other zones, uh, that have required landscaping, and that's what these new pages, uh, clarify. They replace the page, uh, pages two through four in the, uh, ordinance that you already have in your packet. And, again, consistent with the Planning Commission's recommendation, it prohibits, uh, artificial turf in areas where landscaping is required and when visible, uh, from the street, immediately adjacent to the property.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. One second. Let me just offer to all of my colleagues, again, we have, uh, two speaker cards. Uh, does anybody have comments before we go to the public?
Just one.
Yes, Mr. ...
On the artificial landscaping, are you talking only in the setback areas? Or anywhere in the, visible from the street, for instance?
Um, we prohibited, it would, uh, be prohibited in the ROS and R1R zones.
Not just in the setback?
Not just in the setback.
Clear to the house.
Prohibited completely in those two zones. In all other zones, uh, anything that would be visible from the public right-of-way.
Which virtually goes to clear to the house. No difference. You just don't want to see artificial turf.
You could put it in your back...
That was the recommendation.
Okay. All right. Uh, let me open the, the hearing, and let's go to the public. Our first speaker is Deborah Dentler, followed by Stephanie Landrigan.
Good evening, Mayor Draymond, members of city council and staff. My name is Deborah Dentler. Um, I came down tonight to speak on this item, um, hoping that perhaps I could be an information resource to the council concerning the particular, um, topic of artificial turf, not because I have any, uh, particular fondness for artificial turf or any expertise concerning the various products that are on the market. However, I thought I could be a helpful informational resource, because I served on the Board of Directors of the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California for four years during the time period when the, um, rebate program offered to local cities through water, local water agencies, such as Glendale Water and Power, and through our water agencies and our cities, uh, those rebate programs are extended to our local residents, our property owners, both residents, residential property owners and commercial and industrial property owners. The rebate program that MWD worked hard to develop, and which was lauded, uh, very recently by Governor Schwarzenegger as an important component in encouraging the public to conserve water, uh, that rebate, rebate program was launched so recently that I'm wondering if perhaps staff might have, um, checked with MWD staff concerning the, uh, particular rebate available for artificial turf users before completing its work for tonight's staff report. Of course, um, the staff report properly indicated that local landscapers have been consulted, and that's perfectly appropriate and desirable. Uh, our lands, local landscapers know our plant materials, they know our neighborhoods, um, and they're keeping a watchful eye on water, um, consumption for our, for our, um, our property owners. However, they're not the only source of expertise on this. Um, I think it would be important, and perhaps, um, essential from an economic point of view, as well as an aesthetic point of view, to find out whether the staff did consult with the MWD staff, and whether, um, council has been fully apprised of how the rebate program works that MWD has put into effect. Because although the staff report says, and has styled this as an extremely minor change that will really have little or no important consequences to the city and to its residences, I think the staff report kind of obfuscates or buries, uh, the true impact. Essentially, artificial turf will be effectively banned, prohibited, and people will not get access to that rebate, unlike our neighbors in Pasadena, Burbank.
Ms. Dentler, I have to ask you to conclude. Thank you.
Um, and that's the gist of, that would be my suggestion, is that the matter be sent back for further consideration of the MWD's program and the governor's, uh, enthusiastic embrace of, uh, the rebate process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dentler. Stephanie Landrigan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Stephanie Landrigan. I'm a landscape architect. I was one of the advisors that the Planning Department discussed this with. I also went to the hearing for the Planning Commission. Actually, in direct answer to Ms. Dentler, on the very last page of the staff report, it indicates that MWD and GWP were consulted, and it was a discussion item. But I would like to say that, um, I think Kristin did a fine job. I am more of an expert on artificial turf probably than Ms. Dentler. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to talk to you about it. I think, uh, Mr. Weaver's question about whether it should be in the front yard or not, has more to do, when we were discussing it, with some of the sanitary issues that occur from an artificial surface. What, how will bacteria grow? You have all sorts of animal life that come and use it, that you would have children playing on, and we just felt that having it as part of the public front landscaping did have some concerns, and that was one of the issues we brought up that was not presented. So, thank you. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Landrigan. Mike Mohill, followed by Evelyn Hansen.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilmen. I guess we're talking again about the pro and the con about artificial turf. Being a fertilizer salesman many moons ago, I dealt with artificial turf. Often, it is carcinogenic. State of California has come out, the Attorney General has made a letter to the manufacturers of artificial turf. Now, I don't know what the results have been that, but as of six months, nine months ago, they were considered carcinogenic. Another problem with artificial turf is how do you clean it? It has a lot of bacteria in it. Unlike me talking with natural vegetation, Mother Nature takes care of it with rain, sun, snow, whatever. Artificial turf, kids play on it, they fall down on it, they get hurt. There's no cushion. Actually, very unsanitary. Yes, a lot of cities, schools are going to artificial turf because they say, ah, we make one investment and we can forget about it. Problem is, you don't forget about it. It's, it's, it's not normal. The salesman is going to try and sell you that artificial turf is the best thing since sliced bread. On the playing field, they're having to go ahead and use a disinfectant from time to time. I don't know what the schedule is. Now, are people going to be using disinfectant in their, in their homes, their own yards and so forth? You may be creating a monster. If it's not broken, why fix it, you know? So people use less water. They can always put down plants rather than turf. Artificial turf, ever lay on it, ever play on it, gentlemen? Councilman Najarian, might I do a feedback in this situation? Ask you, Mr. Mayor, can I ask him?
Well, I'll tell you what, maybe Mr. Najarian will engage you in some discussion afterward, but let you in mind.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, that's my, my experience. It's like playing on, on cement. There's no give. It's get hurt. Now, grant you, in your backyard, you may not have that situation, but you've got sanitary situation to consider about. That's my two cents.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Evelyn Hansen.
Oh, good evening, Evelyn Hansen. We all know this is a subject near and dear to my heart. I don't have any real opinion about artificial turf one way or the other, other than to say, I'm sure that if you're not going to let us use it, y'all are not going to be using it either in city landscaping. Is that, I would hope, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. If we can't do it, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be doing it either. If it's not sanitary enough for our children, it's not sanitary enough for parks and kids to play on, dogs crap in the park as well, and people don't clean up after it. I think the, the use of mulch is a really great idea. I'm glad that now I, if, if the city attorney's office files criminal charges against me for a third time for using mulch, I can now point and say it's actually definitely allowed. I do kind of wonder why I've spent attorney fees defending myself in the, less than three years ago against charges that I used mulch. That's pretty much all I got. I, I hope we can maybe look at rain barrels, the, the used city recycle containers that are no longer appropriate for, for use by the automated trucks, use those for rain barrels. I, with this last rain, since I'm not pulling weeds out of my yard right now, I used my recycle barrels for my green barrels as rain barrels. They're, they're sitting full of water right now, they're closed, know when mosquito season is in, if there's still water in them. If I haven't used it by then, the mosquitoes won't be getting into it, but I'd like to, I think that's a great idea, if we could look at recycling those barrels into rain barrels so people could be conserving water that way. Use water from the roof instead of water we could be drinking. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's, I, first of all, let me, let me close the public portion of the hearing. That was my last speaker. But I also want to remind my colleagues that the item we're hearing is not specifically about the general topic of, of eco-friendly products, recycling, specifically about astroturf or artificial turf. It's about a variety of issues, so let's keep that in mind. And I, I want to ask either, actually, as Kristin asked, just let me ask you one question as I, before I kick it off to my colleagues here. Can you make a couple of comments related to what the city may or may not be looking at in terms of water conservation or mandatory water conservation similar to our, our neighbors, our big, big neighbor downhill, City of Los Angeles, just made a rather major announcement today? Perhaps the man, the man sauntering toward the podium.
Reluctantly.
Like a guns, like, like a gunslinger, Glenn Steiger, who is our general manager of Glendale Water and Power.
Mr. Starbuck is so insightful. We are looking at, at water rationing. We are looking at water restrictions. We are in the midst of putting together a new water conservation ordinance, which we will be bringing to you within the next two months. And while we're not ready to make the leap that our neighbor to the south has made, we will be coming back to you with recommendations shortly. The odds are, the odds are that by July of this year, we will be looking at water rationing. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. You answered my next question, which was, when are we thinking about that? All right. Thank you, Mr. Steiger. All right. Let me go to my colleagues. Mr., we'll start with Mr. Weaver, and we'll work our way to the right.
Well, I know staff has worked on this for some time. The landscape committee that worked on it, so I'll go along with what staff is recommending. The only thing I'm, I guess I'm disappointed in is the artificial grass. Remember, we all remember when the original ones came out, it was like a carpet put over concrete. Massive injury, especially in athletic fields. We have now placed those fields on the sports complex, put it at Glendale High School, and we're looking at other locations. A lot of the major football stadiums have it. It's not as hard going down as it used to be. I guess Mr. Najarian can speak to it, and I can't. I've walked on it and stuff, and it's, there's a certain amount of cushion to it. The technology keeps evolving, and we all know. I don't think it's gone as far as it's going to go yet. Materials have changed. I assume that eventually they'll have perforated mats for the water instead of just running off it, will be able to permeate through in holes into the ground and beneath it. I don't particularly see a problem with it on a flat surface. First, I've heard about the bacteria getting there. On Glen Oaks, just about all the lawns are, just about all the house have grass lawns, and they're flat. And I seldom see any kids playing on any of those lawns. If they're any place, they're in the backyard. But, I mean, I sure can't contradict what I'm hearing. If there's bacteria there and that's dangerous, well, means we haven't come as far as we have to in development technology. But at some point in time, if we really have to go to serious water rationing, there's going to be trade-offs have to be made. There's a lot of lawns in Glendale and every city in this state. We're in an arid climate. We have a lot of lawns. We're going to maybe be back visiting this in a few years, some other council, with the latest technology they have at that time and, and the wallerations that Mr. Steiger said we're going to have. What are you going to do? You're going to allow the artificial or make people grow grass and turn the sprinklers on? For now, I guess I got to go with staff's recommendation, but I sure hoped I would have seen something different when I came back.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Quintero, anything about microbes or bacteria you'd like to?
Lastly, the little I know about it, I would assume that whatever microbes or their bacteria may have to do with sports fields where the participants are cut and blood is spilled and so forth. But I have a question or a couple of questions for Ms. Landrigan, if she'd come up here for a minute. Stephanie?
Early.
I know you, and I've seen your work and appreciated your work throughout the years. So one of my questions about the ordinance and the working group and so forth, have you all done everything that you can to conserve water in your approach to this ordinance? And I don't want to go into a situation where we're kind of saying, well, yeah, we're going to do this ordinance, we're going to tighten up a bit, but we're really not going to take the necessary steps that we need to take to, to try to cut water usage, to try to conserve water.
Councilmember Quintero, actually, there are many more things that we can do, and I think that probably they will be incorporated in the next water ordinance. Assembly Bill 1881 became law, and it's very restrictive. It'll require water auditing for large pieces of property. So it's going to be more restrictive, and the landscaping as it is right now, we can use plants and grasses that use less water, don't require mowing. There are other things we can do, but as, as Mr. Weaver and Mr. Mohill mentioned, and I did, right now, it's not just the sports activities that contribute to the bacteria, it's just they don't break down. And also, the other thing that we don't think about is the wildlife contribution of living plants is being removed slowly by putting artificial turf in. So there needs to be a balance. So I think you have to think of this, we want to go lead, we have to think in those terms, too.
I'll tell you what, because of time, let's try to stick to actually what the question was.
I wasn't, I wasn't thinking in terms of the artificial turf. We'll let that go. No, what I meant was, I mean, the ordinance itself, does a homeowner in an average neighborhood in Glendale, a flat neighborhood, say, Rossmoyn Northwest, do they have the ability to, with this ordinance, can they begin to pull up that lawn that takes enormous amounts of water and begin to plant and do other types of landscaping? That's, it appears that's the case, but I just want to.
That's really the intention. The intention is to, to not create a violation of the code by doing things that are considered smart landscaping and water conservation.
Because we did have a couple of homeowners that stepped out and did some, I thought, decent landscaping, and unfortunately, neighborhood services didn't feel that way. But anyway, this, this will remedy those.
It does. I think it closes that gap.
Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian.
I think I like some of the proposals here, except for the artificial turf. I think we need to permit people to exchange out their water thirsty lawns for the artificial turf. Many homes simply will lose their character, and we've spent a lot of time in this council chamber talking about character of homes. And many times, the landscaping, the expanse of green leading up to a home is as much the character of the home as the actual architectural features. So what we're telling someone is the only changes you can really make is go to a xeriscate or a bark or a mulch or something like that. And I think for many homes, that many homeowners will say, well, no, that's not what I want. I'd like that green expanse, whether it's grass or turf. So we're not really giving them any, any option at this point. The turf is going to save an exceptional amount of water. It's going to reduce the nitrates that people put on their lawns in terms of fertilizer from leaching into the groundwater and into our storm drains. It's going to cut down on the CO2 and the carbon monoxide that the lawn mowers and the trimmers cause in the course of cutting the grass. It's going to cut down on the noise. It's going to cut down on allergens for those people who are allergic to grass. So I think we are, we are unfairly restricting, prohibiting turf from being put in. Now, let's talk about the Landscape Advisory Group. Kristin, were there any manufacturers of artificial turf on that group? Were there any installers of artificial turf? The sense that I'm getting is that this was a shaded group. I mean, these are landscape architects whose job is to design plants and put plants in and mulch and all this other stuff. So I'm not looking at this Landscape Advisory Group as a completely unbiased jury, to be quite honest with you. So you really don't. I mean, did you have any turf people there?
There were no manufacturers of artificial turf, but one of the advisory group members has artificial turf in his backyard.
And what did he say?
And he also shared a number of his concerns that echoed what the rest of the group had.
He didn't want turf in the front yard?
Correct.
Someone in my neighborhood has turf, and I've got to be honest, I, I mean, in terms of the aesthetics, I almost went up to his front door and said, how do you keep your lawn so green? It was so, so lifelike. In terms of bacteria, well, there's plenty of bacteria on regular grass. In terms of injuries, falling on turf is going to be not any more dangerous than falling on, on grass. Terms of animals doing their thing, well, that's going to happen whether you've got grass or whether you've got turf, and if an animal does it on your front lawn, it's natural grass, it's not going to magically disappear either. You're going to have to get rid of it and treat it and clean it. I just think that artificial turf should be an option that our residents can, can do. We are, in many neighborhoods, xeriscate is appropriate, but in other neighborhoods, I'm thinking northwest with those great expanses of lawns leading up to their beautiful homes, that they're not really given a choice. The only choice that we're giving them is to maintain that, that lawn. They should be given the choice to put in turf. It'll be great for the environment. We've got to conserve our water. We've got to stop the nitrates from leaching into our soil and our ground, our aquifer. I'm just disappointed that we're not, we're not giving that option. And then let me understand the other option on, on Title 13, that when we go into water conservation, all bets are off? There's no violation of zoning ordinance then? You can let your lawns go dead and you're not required to put the green back in?
If the city ca, if the city council adopts a, some sort of a, an extreme situation in terms of water conservation, then we need to be able to address that issue for perhaps landscaping that may not be maintained the way that you would be maintaining them, especially the turf. So we have a clause that if the city council adopts such an extreme measure, then the level of maintenance that we expect would not necessarily be required.
Mr. Nagy, I think the question is, is this a trigger? Would this voting approval of this, would this be a trigger for that?
No.
No.
Okay. This is intended to basically cover the gaps of when the council does consider potentially mandatory water rationing or some very strong conservation measures, at that time, you can also reconsider the level of maintenance that you allow. But we included the language in here so that ultimately, if you do, they'll, they'll be compatible.
Very good. Mr. Najarian.
You know, some of our neighbors do permit it. This isn't the trigger to global warming and, you know, meltdown that perhaps some people think it's going to be. I think if maintained properly on flat surfaces, artificial turf is just going to be fine. Some of the other concerns about hillsides, I understand that with slopes, that could definitely be a problem. But on a nice, flat expanse leading up to a home, you should, I think the owner should be permitted to put in the turf.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember, you say for it?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to read from the staff report. I'm fine with the rest of the stuff, but the issue with the artificial turf, Laconada, Frintridge, our neighbor, not permitted for required landscaping area, but may be used in other areas outside of the front yard setbacks. Los Angeles, our biggest neighbor, allows artificial turf in landscape areas but counts as hardscape area and not as required landscaped plant area. Burbank, not permitted for multi- Burbank, not permitted for multifamily and non-residential projects. For single-family projects that landscaping requires are less specific and would likely be allowed, which means we just really don't know what it is. There is not really a clear cut. For as many reasons why we should have artificial turf, I can give you as many reasons why we shouldn't have artificial turf. This is a city that just adopted a historic districting and so I like to know, putting a plastic piece of carpet in front of your house, is that consistent with the historic district of the house? They say, well, there is no problem with that, we just have to worry about the nitrates that goes into the ground. First of all, you shouldn't over fertilize. Second of all, how do you think artificial turfs break down? All their polyvinyl chlorides, which, by the way, carcinogens, evaporate into air, we breathe it in the air, and then it just turns into dust. Then you got to take it out. It doesn't last forever. We put it in our soccer fields, but also we maintain them properly. We have people who go there and spray them with specific chemicals to make sure the bacteria does not live in there. You got to deal with the algae issue because it's a piece of material that at this point, it has reached the point that Mr. Weaver is talking about. There will be a time, you will have a fiber material that will not be susceptible to bacteria. They're working on it, I don't know when it's going to come out, but it will be out there. There will be fibers that bacteria can't live on it. It's not here yet. So those are some of the issues that I worry about. I got to worry about the quality of life also. Now, I drove to Santa Barbara the years that there were drought. And you know what? I drove through the Seventeen Mile, a beautiful drive in Santa Barbara that you drive and you see all those beautiful trees, beautiful lawns in Santa Barbara. Because of the drought, every single lawn was dead. And that's the way it is. C'est la vie. I didn't see in Santa Barbara, artificial turfs in every single lawn. And when the water came back, you drive there and it's green. So, you know, I can understand when times change, we allow people not to water their plants because, you know, you drink the water, it's more important than you water your plants. But nevertheless, I think some of the items that is in the staff report that allows for you to plant a different type of planting material, you can put some of the bark around, I think that could be a lot of mitigation in that. And also, I agree with our landscape architect, which is, you know, there's different other grasses you could plant that doesn't need mowing and, and, you know, and you don't have to water as much. And in final, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to kind of remind myself that last time we talked about a tree ordinance and the same person came up in here and told us, you know, there's some issues, be careful about it, and we didn't listen to her. I was one of those who didn't listen to her. And then when he ended up with the quagmire that you know what it was. So this time, I'm listening to her. I learned my lesson. So I am, I'm willing to go with the staff report at this point. And when, when time comes, that Mr. Steiger comes back to us with the rules and regulations that we have to adopt according to the SB 18, what was that number?
1881.
1881, then we will comply with those rules. But that's, this is what's in front of me now.
I'm going to tease you, Mr. Yusefian, only because I saw so many mouths mouthing the words out there. The reason when you were driving around Santa Barbara, you didn't see that in Seventeen Mile Drive, because Seventeen Mile Drive is in Monterey.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. It is in Monterey. Eh, what do I know?
But anyhow, but we knew what you meant and a point well taken. I'm going to go along with the, with the report as is. I have some concern about defining if we're going to use, allow the use of artificial turf. I'd like to see it dialed in a little more, frankly, perhaps to specify flat, flat applications or things of that nature. But I think that that is something, again, that when we come back, this is a, I think when we come back with, what is, I think Mr. Steiger was saying, our anticipation is July or so, November 9, we can look at it at that time. The only other thing I want to mention is what I don't want to see happening is what happens also, the flip side, Mr. Quintero, of, of the specter of Neighborhood Services going out and throttling someone that's put in xeriscade, is the issue where the neighbors are complaining to the city, saying our, our neighbors have taken out all of their landscaping and have paved their front yard and are parking cars on it. Then Neighborhood Services goes out and says, you can't do this. And then we have a reporter, or not a reporter, a columnist from the big paper down the hill who says that the city is filled with Nazis who have nothing else to do but go out and, and pick on people. And by the way, not mentioning that he's a social friend of the people that had the house anyway. But be that as it may, I want to make sure that we don't end up in that situation either. So, Mr. Weaver.
I'd just like to ask staff, have you done any research on the latest in artificial turf materials? Do they have the perforated type now? If you haven't, even if we don't adopt it here tonight, staff, go take a look and see what's coming on the horizon if it's not there already.
Let's answer his question, but I don't want to turn this into a debate on artificial turf. That's not what this is.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
That's not what this is. So I was going to quick answer if you know.
The, from the research we did about artificial turf, there is a number of products that have holes in the backing as well as some sort of mesh to allow for some drainage.
You've studied all of these? And after studying all of them, current technology, you say, still, no?
Correct.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Quintero.
There's no further debate, I will introduce the ordinance.
Or you would.
All right.
The point is mute.
We'll debate it again next week.
Okay. So the ordinance has been introduced at 9:00 A.M. All right. All right. Thank you. And Mr. Kasakian? I don't think it requires anything else, does it? No?
No.
Let's, let's go to...
Well, it's not on the agenda, Mr. Mayor, but it's your prerogative to make the presentation.
It is, we're going to jump back to, I guess, presentations and appointments for a moment. And I will apologize to Mr. Solis, but unfortunately, we juggled our schedule a little bit and...
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Mayor Draymond, members of the city council, I wanted to drop by today. My name is Tara Gouraya. I'm the district director for Senator Carol Lou. I'm accompanied by one of our field reps, Joseph Solis, who covers this area, and I'm sure you all know very well, a resident here of Glendale. The purpose of my visit and presentation, and to be very brief, is twofold. One, to personally introduce myself and my staff that will be representing the area. And secondly, to personally invite you to the district office open house that we will be holding on February 26th from 5:00 to 6:30 P.M. Here at the office, which is here in Glendale on 710 South Central Avenue, Suite 310. And we really do hope that you'll have a chance to drop by, say hello to the senator. She's very excited about representing Glendale and all the surrounding areas. And, you know, it'd be a great time to sort of come sit and chat with her and to meet the rest of the staff. And most importantly, we're here to serve you. If there's anything we can do, we can do for you, don't hesitate to contact myself or Joseph, who will be representing the city. So just wanted to simply introduce myself. And you already know Joseph, and again, if you need anything else, just contact the office. You're invited, the viewing public out there is invited. And it's again Thursday, February 26th. And if you have any question, I'd be more than happy to entertain that.
We have some hardware for Senator Lou's wall, so...
Oh, good.
So let me present that to you at this time.
Time of the open house? What time is the open house?
5:00 to 6:30 P.M. I hope to see you all.
And where's the office again?
710, 710 block of South Central Avenue, Suite 310, in the Social Security Building. We're on the third floor of the Social Security Building.
And you all have gotten printed invitations. I saw it last week in the mail.
Please allow me to present this to you. It is a plaque with a tile, which it has, contains on it the seal of the city of Glendale, presented to Senator Carol Lou, who is our representative of the 21st District from our city council in our city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Pleasure.
And, Mr. Solis, good to see you again, always. And we'll see you at the open house.
This is beautiful and we appreciate it.
I hope that, I hope that the senator will place it in the area where it will always be in her thoughts, so...
Definitely. Thank you, you have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kasakian, I appreciate that. Let us move on to item 8, 8C.
8C is Chief of Police Regarding Installation of Electronic Equipment in Police Department Vehicles. At 8C1 is Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Bidding and Authorizing in Agreement with Airwave Communications Enterprises.
Let me first go to Mr. Weaver then.
We'll move 8C1.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Kasakian, do I have any cards on this?
No.
Okay. Let me go quickly to my colleagues and see, Mr. Weaver, anything? Mr. Quintero? Mr. Najarian?
Just have a question as to what exact type of technology are we talking about? Are these just radios or is this the license plate scanning technology that'll alert, you know, without intervention by the officer?
No, this is actually an installation of all the components in the police vehicles. Sirens, radios, computers, all the equipment in there.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Just to clarify, this isn't the purchase of equipment, it's just a contract with a firm that installs any of the equipment that needs to be installed in police cars.
But we'll make them all compatible.
Right, right.
All right. Mr. Yusefian, anything?
Nothing.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. I have no speaker cards. If there's no further discussion, let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. All right, let's, what do we have at item 8D, 1 through 4?
8D is Director of Public Works Regarding Los Angeles County Metro Call for Project Grant Funds. At D1 is Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents with the City of Burbank for Burbank to Administer the Design and Construction of the I-5 SR-134 Congestion Management Project for Both Cities. At D2 is Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Execute a Professional Services Agreement with Advent Tech Consulting Engineers, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $242,000 to provide dollars to provide design service and construction management assistance for the Fiber Optic Communication Gap Closure for IEN Expansion Project. At D3 is Resolution Appropriating $1,018,000 of New Prop C Discretionary Grant Revenue and Other Associated City Local Funds to Project Number G51697 for Implementing the I-5 SR-134 Congestion Management Project. And at 4 is a Resolution Appropriating $1,859,002 of New Prop C Discretionary Grant Revenue and Other Associated City Local Funds to Project Number G51698 for Implementing the Fiber Optic Communication Gap Closure for the IEN Expansion Project.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Kasakian. That was a whole lot to read. All right. Let me first see if we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Weaver?
Move 8D, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Second.
Yes, we have a motion and a second on that. I have no speaker cards on this. Mr. Najarian?
Before we vote on this, and clearly I'm in, I'm in favor of this, I just want to, I guess I just want to relay that these are funds from the MTA that came in our call for projects. And these were funds that were almost left untapped by the city of Glendale. They come out with something called the rainbow sheets. There are 88 cities in Los Angeles County that are vying for this type of funding. When these two projects first came out on the review, and they're ranked by a technical committee, the money wasn't there. We did not meet that threshold. So it was only after a lot of scouring through the other cities, poking holes in some of their applications that the technical advisory committee missed, dropping them below Glendale, did we rise up to that funding level. This is money that's going to go towards increasing the synchronization of our lights through a fiber optic system, both connected to our downtown traffic management center as well as the, that little cut through between the I-5 and the 134 where it does not have that connection. So it's great to be on the MTA.
Okay. Are there any comments on this? Mr. Yusefian?
Question from Mr. Zern. Is this money available or it's frozen now?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, this money's available.
Available.
Yes.
Okay.
As of today.
This day you don't know, that's why I keep asking.
Yesterday, eh?
All right, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Kasakian, if you would call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
Yes. All right, I believe that takes us back to item 8A.
No, 8B.
Excuse me, 8B. Pardon me. Beg your pardon.
8B is Director of Planning Regarding Initiate Resoning and/or Establish a Special Setback Ordinance Along An Adjacent to Hollister Terrace. At B1 is Motion Providing Direction of Staff to Initiate an Ordinance.
All right, let me turn to the city attorney. We have two, two of our colleagues who may or may not be conflicted out of all or part of this, and I turn to you for your counsel.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I turn to the two council members to make the appropriate announcement consistent with the fair political practices regulations.
Well...
Mayor?
It's a jump ball. I'll start with Mr. Yusefian.
I was wondering if we could do oral communication first, so this way I can just leave and go home because I have a conflict of interest.
Okay, well, let me find out if there is. I think that's what the city manager, I mean, city attorney is asking.
If there is?
Yes, can we ascertain that?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I've indicated that based upon the location of the primary residences of both Councilmember Weaver and Councilmember Yusefian, that a potential conflict of interest exists and they would have to disqualify themselves. At this stage, there are possibilities for bringing them back in through segmentation and the legally required participation provisions, but not at this particular stage of the procedure.
Not at this stage, all right, that's what I was looking for.
Yes, sir.
All right, let me turn to my colleagues, since I have one request to go forward, one request to, to go to oral communications now, is there a preference from my colleagues? Mr. Yusefian has expressed one. Councilmember Najarian?
Did you say that they can stay? We're not at the stage yet when they have to recuse themselves?
No, they, we are at the stage where it would be, in my opinion, they'd be required to recuse themselves and leave the dais, essentially leave the room.
Right, so...
I don't have a problem with going to oral communications.
Mr. Quintero? Mr. Weaver? All right. I have a request from Mr. Yusefian and I do want to honor his right to hear oral communications. So let me go to, let's put an asterisk there and let's go to oral communications. Mr. Kasakian? Absolutely. If you wouldn't mind reading the item for oral communications, please.
Item 6 is Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Very good. Thank you so much. Our first speaker is Tamara Movsesian, followed by Barry Allen. Our first speaker is Tamara Movsesian, followed by Barry Allen. Thank you, Ms. Movsesian. Councilmember Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, again, encourage those people that do not speak English to please come and try and get an interpreter to explain to us. This lady, I think, and others before may have very valid points to make, very pertinent bits of information to pass not only to the council but to the viewing audience. But some of us understand Armenian. Many, many in the community do not. So we do not provide interpreters. That is our policy, and translators. So please, if it's possible, try to get an interpreter so everyone in the community can understand your concerns. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Mr. Barry Allen, followed by Elise Kafian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and of course, the public. I'm Barry Allen with Van Guardians, representing even more people than I know. Every day I meet more and more people that say thank you for speaking for me. Four points I'd like to make this evening, time permitting. First, I'd like to thank the council and management for listening to and accepting many of our suggestions for cutting expenses, such as take-home cars, enterprise businesses, and other suggestions. Another suggestion was to look at and evaluate the use of consultants. I asked for information as to the number of consultants and contract workers. No one's been able to provide that information. This is just one more issue that shows management's out of control. Two, the terms of the parking structure, land lease at the Americana, require the city to change, charge for extra police services, and the Americana to pay for them. We have attempted to obtain the invoice and payment information under PRA, and to date there are none for the services on November the 15th and over the Christmas holidays. That's revenue that our city needs. Third item is the advertisement for the utility users tax includes the words "treated fairly." What does that mean? That I'll pay the same fee as everyone else, or that I'll get the same services as everyone else? Then it goes on to read, "Preserve funding for essential services like police, fire protection parks, and libraries." Does that mean the funds raised by this tax will go directly to funding public safety, parks, and libraries? Or does that mean the funds raised will go to the general fund to be used as council And the last item. I was taken aback when I saw Vaughn's delivery truck on campus of City Hall. The driver was delivering some 200 orders of food, snacks, and sodas, and coffee, and chili, and chunky soups, and noodles, $1,100 worth of groceries delivered to management services. Who was this food for? Why are tax dollars being used for this? How many of these $1,100 purchases does the city make each year? Glendale has a contract with an outside vendor for vending machines, filled with drinks and snacks for employee use. I know that $1,100 is a tick in the general, in the grand scheme of things in our wealthy city of Glendale. But there are residents here who could use that $1,100 just to survive. In fact, that $1,100 could buy 31,428 meals according to Feed the Children. I guess we lost one, didn't we? The, is this fiscal accountability? Many of us are tired of your grubbing for our money while the numbers of foreclosures increase, as businesses close down, and employee salaries and benefits increase, and as the city retains more consultants. At some point, this insanity must stop. Thank you. I'm Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. City Manager, would you care to respond to that? Because I know you had some comment for me about that.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We've reviewed the purchases made. Some portion of those were returned. The materials kept at management services are for meetings, to some extent for use by some councilmembers to a very limited degree, and frankly, some staff. But generally, those are supposed to be for meetings of public and other members coming in to meet in management services. The point's well taken that in this day and age, every review should be made to make sure that those costs are kept to a minimum, and we have done that and will continue to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver.
Starbird, what you received, about how long does that supply last? I sell them, see, that amount of supplies ever coming in, it'll last months.
And Mr. McFaul says it's probably five to six months.
Well, purchase.
But the point's well taken. The point's well taken.
All right. Mr. Quintero, and I see a smile on your face.
For the record, I just want to say I'm not eating any frozen chili or anything. Faintly resembling what the speaker was talking about.
Now, he doesn't eat peanuts, Mr. Weaver. You're mistaken. He works for it, but he doesn't eat, he doesn't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. All right. Thank you for the, for the update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yusefian.
I just want to let you know the only peanuts that were there is pretty stale today, so there's no peanuts.
Elise Kafian, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor Drayman and members of the city council and staff. My name is Elise Kafian, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Glendale Organized Against Cell Towers. Our group was very pleased with T-Mobile's announcement last week that it is withdrawing its application to install a cell tower on Cumberland Road. We were also happy to hear T-Mobile say that it wants to work with this community and the city to find appropriate sites for wireless facilities. We thank each of you for your support on behalf of our neighborhoods, and we want to let you know that several communities around the country have contacted us via our website, and they've told us that we are fortunate to have a city council who listens to and acts upon neighborhood concerns like this. We also thank city staff, which have conducted a lot of research and are continuing to conduct research, and who recommended the moratorium. We look forward to working with the city to draft a comprehensive wireless ordinance. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hammond. Margaret Hammond, followed by Margaret Lincoln.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, staff, and the audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I am here for a couple of reasons. Number one, I want to announce again that the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council will be holding a forum for the candidates on February the 18th at 7:00 p.m. at the Central Library. Parking is free, and all candidates are welcome and have been invited. As to the public, please come and submit your questions, any questions you may have regarding city problems, and you want to find out how the candidates will address those problems. Will Rogers is the candidate, so, I'm sorry, is the moderator. If he was a candidate, that'd be wild. But anyway, whoops. I guess I got off track there. Now, the other thing that I'm here about is the River Walk, and I'm going to be coming every week, and I'm going to talk about it till you do something about that river, that LA River. I just saw, what's his name, Hugh? What's his name that's on channel KCET?
Hauser.
Hauser, thank you. And I am going to send for that tape that he has, CD. And where does it start? It starts at Los Feliz, below Los Feliz. Nothing, they say, well, there's nothing to do in Glendale. Glendale hasn't done nothing, so, you know, we'll start here and go all the way to Long Beach, right? All the way to Long Beach, they can show. We've done nothing. We're, we're a zero. And after all, we own that. We don't have to buy that land to do anything with it. We already own it. Why aren't we doing, why aren't we putting in biking and walking and so forth? I understand from Joanne Hedges, there's even an area back there that's a park, sort of an area, along that river, and, but it's being blocked by the, is it DreamWorks or whomever, denying access to the public, which is already an area there that could be used. That doesn't sound fair to me. And we've done too much for a lot of those companies for us to be blocked from using our own land and property along there. We owned all the way over to Griffith Park at one time before the Five went in, and we lost that part of our property, but to the freeway, but this side of it, we could do something with it. And it's an opportunity to give a wonderful gift to the quality of life, a quality of life gift, to the families of Glendale, especially those that are already in the densest area. They would have access right there. It would be wonderful for families to be able to use that area as a park, not just be maybe confined to a park, but they would have the access to go up and down, all the way into LA, all the way up into Burbank. It's just a great recreation opportunity for our city to take care of. Maybe Ed Begley, if he's an environmentalist, they talk about letting the water, the riverbed go back to dirt and so forth, all kinds of fishes and birds and all kinds of things that are now living there that couldn't before. But because the water, the springs have come up in the bottom of the river through the cement, they are now talking that it could be a very wonderful region again of birds and plants and so forth. I'm hoping we can do something with that, and it would be really a terrific idea. My other thought is regarding the turf. As I said, I, I don't want to live in a plastic city, frankly, and I'm afraid that's what would happen. From where I live on the hill, I look down, and I have three yards, three backyards that are of people on Oak Ridge that have put in blocks, their whole backyard, they've put in virtually cement blocks. And what does that do to our environment? They've, they've taken out all the trees and the bushes, and that's what they've done so they don't have to be bothered mowing the lawns or keeping up anything. So is that what we're looking forward to with the turf? I think that would be really a horrendous thought. I don't know about you, but sure not my idea of what Glendale should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Margaret Lincoln, followed by Mike Mohill.
Good evening, Mayor Drayman and city council members. My name is Margaret Lincoln, and I've been a Glendale resident for 27 years. I too would like to thank you and the other members of the city council and city staff for your support with the T-Mobile issue in our neighborhood. Many members of our neighborhood group, GOAC, have learned a great deal about wireless communications, the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, and various wireless telecommunications ordinances throughout the country during these past three months. Just last week, John McMahon and I attended the Pasadena City Council meeting to support our counterpart in Pasadena, and we learned quite a bit about their wireless ordinance and some of the programs they've put into effect to better regulate telecommunications equipment. For example, they did a citywide survey of existing cabinets and existing wireless installations, and then created what they called an opportunities map of possible locations for siting, which shows city-owned properties and encourage co-location. I encourage our city, as they go, as they start to work on the draft of the wireless ordinance, to consider doing the same to help with the wireless ordinance. Finally, I would like to let you know that Glendale residents, and especially several members of GOAC, would like to be involved in the ordinance drafting process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lincoln. Mike Mohill, followed by Rita Unikian.
I'd like to make a comment, what I read in the Glendale news press a couple days ago about the budget session. They commented in the paper that the city is still talking about having a budget gap of eight and a half million dollars. Now, is that for the month of July, August, September? Or does that include also August, September, November? Where are we? According to what I read from the staff report, we're like 88 million dollars in the hole. So can, can the mayor ask the city manager, where's our, what is the actual figure for the last second quarter?
Well, I would ask that if it were true, but it's not, and that was covered in the session, but I don't want to interrupt your time.
Okay, okay, okay. I didn't hear that one, okay? You made a comment in the, in the GNP about taking money from, getting it from the gas tax. Think we're going to get money from the state? Seriously? I guess the city council, by touching the money from the general fund account, our politicians can continue paying absorbent salaries and pensions to our city union employees. Not to mention that city sometimes, this fiscal year's going to have to pay an added money into the Calpers account. Have we figured that in already? Or did the city forget about that part in their budgeting? Why are we letting the landfill, $230,000, letting other cities use our landfill? That's, that's our jewel, and we're going to let other people use it? Aren't we being short-sighted? Granted, you're going to have $230,000 this year, but will the next city council, the next council after that, what's going to happen? We need to get another landfill. We're going to be taking our trash out to the Mojave Desert? I'm glad the city finally went ahead and closed down the passport department, saved us $55,000. Unfortunately, the Alex Theater still drains us $500,000 a year. Perhaps we got to sell that, too. I love the Alex Theater, but we're losing money on it all the time. I've been talking to the city council for many months now, asking that we renegotiate with the city for unions. I'm pleased to see that finally the city council will be meeting with the unions behind closed door. I guess you guys did it today. Will the city ask the unions to make a 20% cut in salaries and pensions? Will we be telling the city manager union also to take a 20% cut? Will the city manager change the way we run the fire department, eliminate some of those positions that are over, over the, over the top? Will we be telling the unions that all future contracts will be eliminated, and that the city will have to negotiate, the city, let's see, will all future employees have to negotiate on their own terms upon retirement and only receive social security like the rest of us? Only government employees get pensions today. Most private industry does not. Why are government employees special? Our city's in the driver's seat when it comes to hiring, firing, with high unemployment in the county. According to Daily News, January 24th of this year, LA County jobless rate in December was 9.9%. Glendale should therefore have no problem with hiring non-union employees. The three council incumbents, Najarian, Quintero, and Yusefian, are up for reelection in April. Only Councilman Yusefian turned down the $8.5 million pay raise for city employees back in June. Drayman, Councilman Weaver voted to give the union employees a pay raise. City unions historically have been big contributors to the council candidates. It should be interesting to see this time around where they will put their money. Last year, the unions made good investments with their favorite councilmen. Reference to the GNP, February 3rd, councilman members hold edge. In latter part of 2008, Najarian received a combined $15,000 from all four city unions, who also donated $14,000 to Mr. Quintero, but none to Mr. Yusefian. Our city payroll is bloated compared to other cities of our size and should be scaled down. Considering that about 80% of the city budget is for salaries and pensions, I believe it is time for some hope and change. is time for some hope and change, as President Obama has been preaching this past year and all you people a couple of weeks ago were praising him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. Rita Unikian, followed by Anahid Amrkanian.
Hi, how are you?
Hello, welcome back.
My name is Rita Unikian. I represent the Glendale Tenant Association. I speak for thousands of tenants and residents of the city of Glendale. The tenants of this city are suffering an economic crisis of unbelievable magnitude. Mr. Mayor, please, I am very happy right now because for February 8th, when I go for library, for big library for Glendale, lot of people is behind me for rent control. That time, I know it, Mr. Ara Najarian and Bob Yusofyan is very helped me. I'm very proud of that two people, for good council member, for care for this city, for low-income people, and for all of it, for this city for better and to better. But I know it, Mr. Ara and Bob Yusofyan, everybody is vote for April 7th for that people because I know it for very care for this Glendale. I don't like Glendale people, low-income loss, these two people. Plus, Mr. Shahed Koroglian is very help at for rent control. I like it, support Mr. Shahed Koroglian because very care for Glendale. But, Mr. Mayor, I'm talk to every council members and people for here, and I know it, everybody is, Glendale is listen to me. For library, when I go over there, lot of people, I think 12 people is registered for new vote people, plus 10 people, plus two my Ara and Bob. But that people is not care for low-income people. One guys is told Armenian and English and they said, real estate people, everybody is annoyed, real estate people is not help at for rent control. Second guys is there for building. Why is long time I'm come here? That people is not come in meeting and talk to anything for rent control. Is understand for low-income resident is live here. Lot of people is here, new people is come this city. You know it, this economy right now is not good. My president, United States, is told for economy is bad, altogether is help at for resident people. But in Glendale right now is very bad situation for rent. Everybody is go out. You see in the outside, I don't know, maybe you not see, for rent, for the sale for building. Why? Everybody is go out in Glendale. Why? Everybody in the low-income and people is like it Glendale, Glendale my home, and everybody is like it for Glendale. I hope, Mr. Mayor, this time you very think for thinking for who is the support for rent control. For, I like it for three person, for the support my rent control. That people is when is help me, petition is ready, I know it rule already, for thirteen thousand signature citizen, vote people this Glendale, then is rent control is pass. Pasadena right now is the rent control. Beverly Hills is same, every area is same, but I don't know, Glendale why is higher? Why is higher and my council member is not help at for resident? Why you not thinking for rent is very, is bad. Right now is the, my owner, not my owner, all owner is the bring it in the kilometer for rent is higher, but is not care for the people is not money. I like it, you, Mr. Mayor, and another council member, little bit for the owner, for the water is the little bit done, trash is the done, all owner is told me. For Rita, trash is very expensive, water is very expensive, that is, rent is higher. But when you, for the help for owner, and owner is the understand not very pay for anything, rent is little bit done, Mr. Mayor. Rent is very done. Ara Najarian is help at to me. Mr. Bob Yusofyan is very help at to me. I know it for the 7th, April 7th, Mr. Ara Najarian, Bob Yusofyan, Shahed Koroglian is winner this council member, you believe me, because lot of low-income people is behind me. Why? Because his rent is very expensive and I like it, you care, my Glendale resident, low-income SSI, senior citizen, and new person is when is come Glendale. Please, thank you very much, God bless you. That's it.
Okey-dokey. Would you like to repeat your concern from earlier? Anahid Amrkanian, followed by Hilda Tamarian.
Mr. Mayor, it's okay, I'm extended, please.
First of all, if you'd like to, let me speak for a moment. If you'd like to translate for Ms. Amrkanian, that's absolutely fine.
Okay, because nobody here. I hope somebody I find them. Okay. Anun Azganutas.
My name is Hilda Tahmasian. I'm resident in Glendale for 21 years. And then I'd like to just sum matter of very, very big problem in the Glendale. I don't know why this rent control is so high. Every people, I'm getting SSI for, I mean, the SSI person, I just pay for one room, seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollar a month. It's a big house, me and my mom and my dad, we pay, they pay a thousand dollar, I paid seven hundred for, just for one room. And I can't believe, I can't believe this rent controlling Glendale. And then for every, everybody, they talking about low-income people, they say it's too high this Glendale. Why the Glendale is not a rent control? And everybody, they, everybody. Everybody is sad right now for the Glendale, for rent is very expensive. Yeah, very expensive. And please, I don't say, the rent is really, really expensive. Please do something for about Glendale.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tahmasian. The person I'd actually called though was Anahid Amrkanian. Is she here? Is that you? Okay.
Hi, for everybody. Yes, I'm a refugee. I'm a refugee. Anahid Amrkanian. Refugee for September 18th. September 18th? Okay, September 18th, 2008 is come this country? Okay, is a refugee for Ettrish? You know it for every people, when is another country is come this country for the leave, is just two suitcase in the hand. And is come, United States, this United States for the new life and good future. FDC, very low, five hundred eighty for welfare, government is help at this woman. Is not help at that five hundred eighty dollar every month, very cheap money, that is not enough. Electronic, gas, rent is not paid. Very hard for me. Please, you care for my situation? Please, it's help me. Economy very bad right now? My hand is no money and I'm not, nobody support me, just government is help me. Okay. Banker, I'm a person. Just a. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Suban Hazarian? Is Suban Hazarian here? Suban Hazarian going once? Oh, there she is, okay.
First name and last name is Susan. Hazarian. Hazarian.
Oh, Susan, okay.
Hazarian, okay, Hazarian. Yes, in this, I'm American. I'm come in this country for 1995. Fourteen years I'm live this building. I'm paid five hundred dollar, but right now I'm paid eight hundred fifty, right now I'm paid. My husband is die and seven month, seven month die and nobody is there support me. That's why very expensive my rent. Just this Ara Najarian and Bob. Nine years I'm registered for Section 8. Nine years I'm Section 8 waiting list, but nobody is answer me right now. But thank you, Mr. Ara Najarian and Bob Yusofyan and Shahed Koroglian, please, these three person is the help me when is April 18th. When is April 7th is council member more? Thank you, I like it for every council member. Yeah, maybe. Everybody is like, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hazarian. Thank you very much. Okay, that was our last speaker for oral communications. Let me close oral communications, let me go to my colleagues, see if they have any comments related to oral communications. Mr. Yusefian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought if that was not a campaign speeches, I don't know.
Oh, yes, it was.
All right, a couple of items. The first speaker talked about the heater, I think I covered it earlier on, so I'm not going to mention that again. But she did, she did bring up an issue about parking spaces and she had a document from the city website that said, according to her information on the city website, it is a requirement for parking spaces to be provided to a renter. And she was wondering why is it that we are going to pass new ordinances if that is required? I will take the time to explain to her that what she's talking about is a zoning ordinance, it's a difference, there's a difference. I had asked, this was brought up by Mr. Allen, but I had asked from city attorney for a list of all the consultants and vendors to be given to all the campaign, all the campaigns. So I am yet to get that. That would be very helpful, so this way we don't go out there and take contributions from organizations that are having business in front of the city, about twenty-five thousand dollars and up. The other thing is, I would like to thank the two individuals on the cell tower issue. I would like to say, it's not very often people come to this dais and thank us, so God bless you. The issue with Margaret left and we're going to have another, Courtney Council's going to have their campaign, I mean, they're going to have their candidate forum at the library. I would like to ask the staff to look at the PA system. We were there on this Saturday, last Saturday, and it's Sunday. And it was very, very difficult for us who live, sit up there to hear. And everybody almost had the same problem, so if you could kind of deal with that, because it looks like there's a lot of that's happening. The other item was, Mr. Mohill, it's only eight million dollars, not eighty-eight million dollars. It is for the year 08, 09. So it's for the whole year of 08, 09, which is a shortfall on the whole 08, 09 budget year. By the way, there is a misconception. People think that we meet with the unions in the closed session. We do not meet with any unions in closed session. We meet with our city manager and then whatever the issue is, he takes that information to the unions and they tell him what he thinks and then they bring it back to us with our HR people. So it is not that we meet with the unions, we don't see face to face. Also, and the issue of the campaign contributions, it's not that they didn't offer, I just said thank you, but no thank you. So there's a difference on the, on the unions when they made campaign contributions. And Mrs. Najarian, don't go anywhere because apparently if you were, Mrs. Najarian wanted about Section 8 and she said that her husband had died about seven months ago, so it looks like if she is on the list, there has been a change, so maybe I can give Mrs. Tartalia's number and her status has been changed, so that may change her points on Section 8. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian.
I better not, no, no, thank you.
It's all right, I'll bring you up in a moment. Mr. Quintero.
Well, number one, I want to thank GOAC, as the group is called, and Mr. McMahon, Ms. Calfeyan, Ms. Lincoln, Mr. Polykronis, because they have truly become the national experts on cell towers. The amount of research they've done is just amazing. And I did get a call from a Pasadena council member who was impressed with the group's presentation. I attended that meeting with T-Mobile and I think the engineers, they were basically engineers that spoke to the group that night. I think even the engineers were impressed with the amount of research that GOAC did. So I think it's the, at this point, it's, I have to say, I'm more impressed with them than many other groups that have sort of formed up in the sense that they, they absolutely do their research, they know what they're talking about. Then the second thing I'd like to comment on and ask a question, what's happening with the Riverwalk? We were approving just about everything, we were ready to go and all of a sudden we've been thrown a monkey wrench. Is it in fact DreamWorks that's, that's holding back the progress?
Well, first, it, it was turned over to the nonprofit group, as you recall, and I understand they are still working on easement issues with DreamWorks and then DreamWorks' expansion project, but we'll get you an update on the project.
Okay, and once that's done, then we're going to proceed because we were basically ready to break ground.
And that way, Hugh Houser will include us next time. All right. My comments are brief. Mr. Yusefian already spoke to a number of them, so I won't cover that ground again. I would only say to my friend, Ms. Unikian, it is amazing to me what a metamorphosis you have made since first arriving at my office, even before becoming the mayor, asking for my help, the umpteen meetings I have had with you. Your issues have changed and changed and changed. First it was, how do I qualify this for the ballot? I took exceptional time to help you with that. I directed you to the city clerk, I directed you to my colleagues, both Mr. Yusefian and Mr. Najarian. You also spoke to Mr. Weaver on several occasions. I took the time to get people from management services offices who speak Armenian fluently so that I could make sure I was understanding you clearly and worked with you yet again. When I step out of this office during a council meeting to get papers in my office and you're sitting out on the steps outside in tears because you felt certain council members who you were praising tonight, you felt had done you in that night, I took the time to try to comfort you on that and help you to understand that everyone in this council is going to make sure that your rights are protected, particularly your rights to be heard and to speak. I took the time to speak to the other person that you keep mentioning, Shahed Koroglian, who is a candidate, to see if I was perhaps missing something and he helped me to understand your issue a bit further. I've spoken to you any number of times since then. I was here the night when I asked my colleagues. I was here the night when I asked my colleagues, not once, but twice, did they want to place on the agenda the issue of, uh, a rent control when your story had metamorphed one more time into now it's that we won't allow it to come forward? And you burst into tears when council member Yusafian and council member Najarian both said, "No, we don't want to place it on the agenda." I'm not exactly sure where you are now. I understand that you're trying to get, um, signatures to place this on the ballot. All I want to say to you is that while you are out there campaigning for three candidates, two of them my colleagues and one who is not, all three of whom I respect, um, I just hope you understand that those council members who are up here, who you did not mention and who you excluded from those who have been helping you, do care about your issues, we do respect your view, and I believe we have helped you in every way we possibly can, but we can't go out and sign and, and distribute petitions for you. Uh, there is no desire on this council that is a majority that asks this to be placed on the ballot or on the agenda for a vote for you. Maybe that will change, but as of now, that's where we are. Um, I'm not saying this to lecture and I know it probably comes across that way, it's a little bit of frustration on my part. Um, I don't know what more I can do for you other than to, as one, one council member, other than just to restate the history of this and how it has changed all along the way. And perhaps you could share this with Mr. Gomez, who I know has been writing some of your, your pieces that you've been reading up here tonight, you didn't read from a paper, but I know he has presented some to you, I know you've explained that Mr. Mohill has given you papers wanting you to read them, you, uh, made a big issue of that with me as well. You know, Mr. Gomez doesn't come here, but perhaps you can explain it to him. Anyway, those are my comments on that. We, are there, if there are no other issues or comments related to oral communications, we still have an item tonight, which is item eight, eight B. Mr. Najarian.
Let me just, um, uh, Ms. Yunikian, I, I agree with what the mayor has said and, and let's be clear and let's not have any misunderstandings. Although this council did not vote to place rent control on the ballot, you have taken your own efforts to start a, what I see is the most basic and the very core of democracy and that's to go out in the community, to obtain signatures, to put the question before the entire community. And I support your right to do that, I will support that till the end, because that is the basic tenet of democracy. And whether you're looking for rent control or term limits or seeking an elected mayor or district elections or any other change to our city laws, uh, of that magnitude, I support you and your efforts and your involvement in the city. Uh, I know you feel very deeply, uh, of your convictions toward this, I applaud that. And your friends who've, who've come before. Um, you don't have to come up and, and campaign for us, though I think that was a little bit much. Uh, your, your quiet thanks is, is all I'm seeking from you and it makes us feel a little uncomfortable, to be honest with you, when, when you're, when you're doing that. So, um, thank you. Uh, the mayor gave you excellent direction and he really spearheaded, I think he really was quite honest and frank in his explanations. He did show you the way and to the extent I helped you or Mr. Yusafian or any other councilman helped you, uh, to take a step closer to your right as a citizen, um, I think we're all glad to be of service to you.
All right, we still have item eight B on the agenda. Um, unfortunately.
And, Mr. Mayor, at this time, uh, I hate to leave all you guys to this fantastic thing, but, uh, since, uh, according to the city attorney, there happens to be, uh, a conflict of interest issue, so I will leave the dais and, uh, let you deliberate on this issue.
All right, Mr. Yusafian, thank you.
Need to announce the nature of the potential conflict?
Uh, the nature of the conflict is that I live within the five hundred feet of the, uh, the areas that are proposed to change their zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yusafian.
So this would require a four vote and in the light of two recusals.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I noted earlier that at this stage, which is just to give staff direction to start the process, it only requires essentially a majority and of, of a quorum. And right now the quorum is three. Two individuals with financial conflicts are not counter toward the quorum, so it would require essentially two votes to move forward. At the time it comes back after, after getting through the planning commission and the process, that time we're gonna be looking at segmentation and what's called the legally required participation exception to make sure that we have enough council members to have or to meet that fourth vote threshold.
Okay. Thank you very much. Let's hear the item.
Mr. Mayor, and what's left of the council, um, B is director of planning regarding to initiate rezoning and/or establish a special setback ordinance along and adjacent to Hollister Terrace. Uh, B1 is a motion providing direction to staff to initiate an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Kusakian. Mr. Hagani.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as mentioned in the staff report, one councilman asked us to actually analyze this area and come with a proposal and if this is the desire of the city council to initiate a zoning, zone change study, that's, uh, that's all we're asking for tonight. If that is your desire to initiate that, we will go forward. We have sent letters to all of the property owners that would, uh, potentially be affected by this, just to say that this is on the agenda for initiation. If you were to initiate it, then we would start a process. At a minimum, we would have one community meeting and we would have, uh, a hearing by the planning commission, uh, following a hearing by the city council with their recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hagani. And, Mr. Quintero, let me also mention that we do have one speaker card as well at some point.
Uh, what is the purpose? Why are we, why is the staff doing this? You said one council member, uh, requested.
That's right. Uh, after we did, you might remember that several months ago, we processed a, a similar rezoning for Glen Oaks Boulevard. And after that particular rezoning was done, a councilman who, uh, Mr. Yusafian asked to actually, to consider also, after the changes to the Glen Oaks Boulevard zoning, to consider this area as well, because it had, this area, the several blocks in this area have potentially similar characteristics to those in, on Glen Oaks Boulevard. And, uh, so we did, we did the initial analysis and the, the Mr. Yusafian asked to put this on the agenda and we were directed to put this on the agenda for initiation, potentially.
Well, I understand and I know Hollister Terrace quite well. What's the purpose of rezoning? I mean, what exactly, what are we doing?
The purpose would be to, to identify the blocks that have, uh, similar or, or a prevalent setback in the front, 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 uh, front of them, to see if, in fact, it is, uh, it would make sense to come up with a special setback for those properties that, that are consistent and then the setback, the prevalent setback is more than what the zoning code would actually allow. In other words, uh, potentially some of those properties could be redeveloped to, uh, build into the setback and then lose some of the characteristic.
So this, uh, this, uh, vote is not to, uh, change the setback, it is to initiate the, initiate the, sorry about that, initiate the process?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question is, is there something more important that the staff could be doing? Quite frankly, I mean, we have limited resources, because, uh, I mean, if it's an impact on the neighborhood compatibility, if homes are being built that are, then that's a different story, then I'm for doing it. Otherwise, why exactly are, are we doing it?
Let me, let me, um, if I may, Mr. Quintero, let me ask you, Mr. Hagani, what, what was the, uh, what was the rationale expressed? What is the concern specifically?
The concern, going back to what initiated the Glen Oaks Boulevard setback rezoning, the concern was that with some, some property owners actually coming with proposals to change or enlarge their properties, they could be building into the front setback. And the original idea behind the first round of rezoning was to, to prevent that from happening, if there is actually a, some, uh, character identifying setback, to try to preserve that. So, uh, we presume that the same consideration is being given to Hollister Terrace and that the similar set of circumstances might exist and that, that may be worth looking at to preserve the same kind of characters.
All right, Mr. Quintero.
This wouldn't be handled by a normal DRB process and so forth?
Not necessarily. The plan, the designer view board may or may not address the setbacks. In other, uh, zoning code does allow to build in some of the setbacks.
Councilmember Najarian.
Um, and I understand the issues here as to the setback, I understand, and there may be more to it. I know that one of my colleagues recommended it for Glen Oaks, the one on Hollister, recommended it for the Glen Oaks councilman and I think the councilman on Glen Oaks is now requesting it for the Hollister for consistency purpose, I'm sure. But, uh, what I'm, I guess, Mr. Mayor, I don't have a, um, you know, as I said, I'm all for neighborhood self-determination. I don't have a sense as to where the neighborhood is on this. And, and if you can enlighten me, before we go too far down this path, I don't want to thrust something upon a neighborhood and be met with a lot of angry people or, or just vice versa, not do something and have, have a, next year a house be built or several houses right in that wonderful setback. So I'm very cautious about imposing what I might think is right, unless I hear from the neighbors, so.
Well, I, let me. Part of the difficulty. Thank you. Um, not that there's anything you can do about it, Mr. City Attorney, however, I think part of the problem you're seeing here is that the council member who requested this be placed on the agenda for discussion is the very, one of the very council members, it's conflicted out, so we're not having the benefit of his advocacy on the point that he himself has raised. Um, as I understand it, they could, either Mr. Weaver or Mr. Yusafian could speak as a, even as a homeowner?
Not at this, but not, not on this matter?
No, not on this matter. I'm talking about, in other words, not on the matter of, of, of commencing, uh, a process, but I mean, when it is agendized for public, just for public hearing?
Actually, actually, no. The reason they were able to, that Mr. Yusafian was allowed to speak, and I think that's what you're referring to, is on the, the issue involving the setback on Glen Oaks, is because he had a personal interest in the real property specifically affected by the zone change. Here, that's not the case.
I see.
He's within the five hundred foot radius as outlined by the FPPC regulations.
All right. All right, Mr. Hagani, I'm sorry.
Uh, I, I guess I can only partially answer one of the questions. Part of the process, if you were to initiate, would be for us to meet with the community and gauge the level of interest on part of the community and the property owners and, uh, first, the level of interest they have to, to visit this and to what extent they would like to visit. So we don't know it as yet and that would be part of the process.
Um, gentlemen, I can't make a motion, just so you know, as mayor, so it's up to one of you. Uh, I'll tell you what, we have one speaker, it's Mike Mohill, let's hear from him. He is, well, I don't know whether he's in that five hundred, he's in that general neighborhood, so.
Mr. Mayor, councilman? Uh, I didn't get a notification of this meeting tonight, so I don't live within five hundred feet. I just happened to be coming in tonight, so I got lucky. Okay? Uh, you gentlemen do not live in this area, Mr. Yusafian and Mr. Weaver do. Uh, I look at Glen Oaks Canyon area as a historic neighborhood without defining it as a historic neighborhood. One of the beauties of Glen Oaks Canyon is you have a middle-class neighborhood which has large setbacks and you get this wonderful feeling that you're in the country. And it's been that way for many years, when the, when the, when the city decided to build and make a plan. I think about twenty years ago, according to Ms. Hagani told me, that the city made a big wide sweep that we're gonna make unified setbacks. And that changed everything in my neighborhood. Now, I do not live on Hollister Terrace, I do not live on Glen Oaks Boulevard, I live on Ashburn Place, so I'm between the two streets. And what it has done is changed the setback requirements. So where you used to have anywhere between a fifteen and twenty-five foot setback, mostly is like about a twenty-five, when they changed the zoning about twenty years ago, people on Glen Oaks Boulevard, now even more prevalent on Hollister Terrace, where the setback, let's say, was, uh, twenty feet, it's now gonna be ten feet. Well, if everybody starts doing ten feet, because everybody wants to have a bigger house, the neighborhood character is gonna be changing. So what you wish, what, what's, you used to have a, as a quote unquote historic neighborhood, without actually defining it, changing the character. Now, I once, uh, last year brought in a picture of a man who, who had gone ahead and made a ten-foot setback from the street. It's a two-foot monster, fifty feet tall. It's an eyesore. I don't live down that part of the neighborhood, but I know that other people do and they've approached me and said, "Mike, thank you for speaking out." So frankly, someone spoke out. And so, right now on Hollister Terrace, we're getting the same thing. People are moving their houses towards the street and it's changing the character of the neighborhood. Uh, it'd be like, for example, where Mr. Nazarian live or Quintero, et cetera, you changed, you changed the zoning where you have a fifteen-foot setback and you like that, all of a sudden your neighbor's gonna have a five-foot setback. How would you feel about that? Well, that's what's happening right now in the Glen Oaks Canyon area. Uh, I approached Mr. Yusafian on it, I says, "Mr. Councilman Yusafian, wouldn't it be nice that we can do the same thing what we did on Glen Oaks Boulevard to Hollister Terrace? Maintain the continuity of the neighborhood." That's why it's being brought. Again, I don't live on Hollister Terrace or Glen Oaks Boulevard, but I drive in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mohill. That sound, uh, pretty close to, uh, to what the issue is? To you, Mr. Hagani?
Pretty close. And if I may, there is one piece that I may not have stressed earlier, that in addition to the setback, there is an issue of height. On Glen Oaks, the zoning, the underlying zoning was changed to allow only a, a, a lower height than previously allowed. So that's another issue.
All right. All right, gentlemen, I come back to the two of you. As I say, I cannot make a motion.
Let me ask just one more question. And so in terms of staff time and effort and so forth, um, how much work is this gonna take?
Well, it will take, any amount of rezoning will take, in addition to the community meetings and the preparation of the staff report, will, will, will require staff to go perhaps in a group and do site-by-site field visit and take photographs and compare the information that we have on a geographic information system with the actual information for, to, to make sure that the data we have is accurate and do a field survey. So it'll take some level of extensive staff time and we will serve at the pleasure of the city council based on the priorities you give us.
Mr. Hagani? When do you anticipate, if you had an affirmative vote today, when did, tonight, when would you anticipate you would start having actual public outreach in the terms of, in terms of meetings with the public?
Uh, within the next three months, we would, we would anticipate, three to four months, we would have the first we would have the first public meeting, and based on that, we would assess whether or not additional public meetings, uh, may be required.
Okay.
Is this going to delay some of the other efforts that you've undertaken, including Foothill Boulevard, et cetera?
It would compete in terms of time with that, and some of the same staff members would have to be assigned to, dedicate part of their time to this. That's accurate.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hagani. Okay. Uh, I can entertain a motion, I can't make it once again, so if there is a motion to be made, please let me know, because we could be here.
Well, I would, yeah, you can see how enthusiastic we are about this. I would, uh, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to it, but I would absolutely want it to go on a slow track and not have it, uh, affect some of the more important, uh, issues that the staff is working with. I don't want it to take time away from other, uh, areas and other efforts that we're undertaking that I think are, are more critical than this, so that's sort of my, my comment.
Yeah, I would agree with, uh, with Mr. Quintero. Usually when we, when we're presented with zoning changes or overlay zones, there's a, we usually hear from the public first. I mean, there's, there's people who've contacted us, or come to council to speak, and, uh, address the issue with strong opinions, and I don't really, uh, I don't really see that here. I'm not opposed to, to starting a process where we'll, you know, take the temperature of the, uh, of the community, of the neighborhood, uh, but clearly not something I'd place on the front burner, uh, to the exclusion of all the other projects that we're, uh, burdening, we're not burdening, but we're, uh, placing in your, on your plate for work.
Well, let me, let me go on the record for saying, uh, that even though I can't make a motion, ha, if one comes forward, and there is a second, I would support, uh, this item. Uh, my concern is that it not jump ahead of the other, I mean, a cup, uh, was it just maybe two weeks ago, Mr. Hagani, uh, in an afternoon session, I believe it was, we were talking about, uh, dealing with parking and other, other issues that take up planning's time, and your concern was the time and the staff time. I know you have a full plate. I would support it, um, if it-
I'll move it.
... isn't gonna get in, in the way of that, and as long as I know the public outreach for this isn't gonna jump ahead of the other things that we have, because this does not seem to be a immediately dynamic, uh, do-or-die kind of thing that immediately, and in large measure, affects, uh, quality of life. It does affect it, as, uh, Mr. Mohill pointed out, but it's not an emergency kind of thing. I would hate to see this jump ahead of issues like parking, commercial parking on brand, and the other issues that we've talked about that impact whole, whole sections of the city, so is there any kind of assurance you can give us as to?
If I may, I could offer perhaps a, a different, a, a different way for us to approach it. If you, you'd like, we could schedule a community meeting for the property owners alone, and I must stress that. It would not be the 500-foot radius, but the people whose properties would be affected by this sometime maybe late May, early June, just to assess the level of interest there is on the part of the property owners that-
Sounds good.
June, June, perhaps June. And I'm, I'm saying June per, because in terms of your concern, concern that this could displace some of the other priorities you've given us for the next three, four months, we would be able to, to do this sometime in June, and just give you a report on the level of interest we hear, and based on that, you could then direct us to go further or not, if that's, that's acceptable to you.
Very good.
I, I could support that. My, uh, concern is that we not just overlook it to the extent that, I mean, we don't know what the response is gonna be from the public. They, just as you say, Mr. Nazarian, they may, they're not here tonight. We've heard from one person. So they, we do the outreach, we will find there is support, or there isn't, we'll, that'll come back to us, uh, in early summer, and we'll, we'll know.
I'll move 8B1 with the conditions set forth by the planning director.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. I have no further speaker cards. If there's no other discussion, then let's call the roll.
Councilmembers Nazarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver? Yusefian? Mayor Draymond?
Yes. And I believe that is the end of our agendized items. Mr. Kusaki?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Thank you.